All right, six o'clock, we're gonna call the meeting to order, April eighth, two thousand twenty-five at Pacific Park. And I, we have a forum. For our, that's held both meetings. Um. And, uh, and you don't get a roll call? Um, and, uh, okay, so we, uh. We have, what do we have, the recording, the meeting?
Uh, the town is recording, um, CTSB will usually pick up on the recording. And if anybody else is recording, they must be recording shift.
I mean, and the court.
Is the edge on, you there, the recording is on?
Yeah, Sean's on.
Yeah, yes, thank you, Sean.
Yes.
And, and, and you're just recording.
The chair is, is fine, but you don't, before you commit.
One day recorded, you been, it's on your shirt.
Well, no, but I. Yeah. Uh, okay, so first agenda item is the approval of the minutes.
I mean, the motion that we.
March.
From March eleven.
Second.
Um, I do have one, um, actually there. And that is, um. On the. That's in the affairs, that the agent for the Southern District. And they just thought to give this title and his name, Tom Beasley. Um, that can even come to the Department of Defense Services, just so that's in the record, he was to go to us. That was really my.
Were any, any, were the comments? Um, I'm glad we sat all over in favor.
Aye.
Same motion?
Done it. I have a motion, a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
unanimous. Okay, so this evening, the Finance Committee and the Select Board hear feedback from the citizens regarding the recommended fiscal two thousand twenty-six budget. Following the public comment, a public hearing to close, and both committees will adjust the budget and then fill in the budget and warrant parties. And the town meeting will be held on Saturday, May third, at two P M, at the. So, we're going to. Open the public hearing, six oh three P M. Uh, as Chair of the Great Barrington Finance Committee, I'm now going to accept the motion to open the public hearing on the fiscal twenty-six proposed budget.
So moved.
Second.
And discussion, roll call, vote?
Um.
Aye.
Aye.
And it's unanimous. You have voted to open the public hearings at six oh three P M. And the public hearing on fiscal twenty-six budget is now open. Um, the purpose of the meeting is to comply with the Great Barrington Town Bylaw, Article Two, Section seven dash four. That requires that the Finance Committee hold, holding hearing on expenditures. Specifically, before any town meeting warrant for which calls for the expenditures of money or the disposal of any town property. The Finance Committee shall hold at least one public hearing, at which all persons interested may be included in any articles contained on the notice. And said committees shall make due report thereon at the town meeting. The budgets are prepared using the charges and assumptions contained in the Great Barrington Budget and Financial Policy for fiscal year two thousand twenty-six. Firstly, we will begin with the town manager's overview. After the overview, we will take public comments. The Finance Committee will be listening to public comment attentively, but will wait to discuss and deliberate on the comments and budget until after the public comment period. Uh, materials for the session, I believe, have been distributed and posted on the town website. So I'll begin, we will begin with the town manager's brief overview of the.
Okay, uh, thank you, Phil, uh, Mr. Rumble, inter-town manager. Uh, thanks for convening yet again to hear, uh, our proposed FY twenty-six budget. Uh, what you will see tonight are highlights of the proposed town budget. Uh, some major components of the town's expected revenue and expenses as. Uh, as we have discussed here in previous sessions. Um, what is in front of you tonight is the Finance Committee and Select Board recommended FY twenty-six budget. Um, those updated pages have been on the town website now for a week or two. Um, to the extent, the rest of the budget book wasn't updated, those pages are still, still intact and on the website for review. Um, so why don't we, why don't we jump in on Friday, as brief as possible, it's only take a couple of hours. Um, the, uh, uh. As always, we present to you a balanced budget, uh, where the expenses and revenues balance out. We do, uh, budget to provide public services at an exceptional level. And I'm really proud of the staff that I work with and representing here tonight, um, for the job that we do. This budget, as you know, conservatively estimates our new growth and local receipts, that's just good fiscal management. Um, a few highlights, uh, as these boards know, and for the benefit of the public. The budget this year shifts, uh, the building department, uh, from Great Barrington to Stockbridge. That does shift costs with it, uh, which in the first year of doing so will benefit, uh, Great Barrington. Um, it does utilize some one-time transfers from special reserve funds for the conservation commission and for cemetery expenses. Um, while we were trimming some, uh, department operations budgets. We did feel it necessary to propose an increase to the Finance Committee Reserve Fund. To make it possible to pay for unanticipated expenses and emergencies. Because departmental budgets can no longer have the extra cushion to absorb any, anything like that. Uh, for the, uh, the request of Southern Berkshire Ambulance and, um, the discussion between the Finance Committee. And the Select Board, this does fully fund the ambulance, uh, request for FY twenty-six. The budget covers up to a hundred thousand dollars of snow and ice deficit. But to do all of this, it does require substantial infusion from our free cash reserves. So that the town can avoid a proposition two and a half overrun. That was primarily driven by a very large school budget this year. And keep in mind, the school budget accounts for over seventy percent of what the town raises in taxes. Uh, goes towards funding the town's portion of the Southern, uh, the Berkshireville Regional School District budget. Briefly, the town's, uh, revenues, uh, rely primarily on the tax levy. And the tax levy in Great Barrington falls primarily on, uh, uh, single-family residential homes. Primarily on the, on the residential tax base, primarily on single-family home. This year at thirty point six million dollars. We do have a fairly good state aid number for FY twenty-six, we are conservatively estimating local receipts. Uh, the free cash being used to reduce the tax levy and ensure that we come in under our prop two and a half. Is at three point nine million this year. We're using some of the wastewater retained earnings to fund the wastewater enterprise fund capital. Community Preservation Act funds just under a million dollars towards projects and expenses approved by the CPC, the Human Preservation Committee. There are a few special articles I'll point out tonight, which are being funded from free cash. We do have a substantial amount of grants this year to help offset some of the capital. Which is excellent, that means we use free cash or borrow funds to do, uh, six million plus worth of capital. Um, we are proposing to exclude some of the proposed capital work from the tax levy calculations. So you'll see that at town meeting and at the ballot box at the May election. The major expenditures, the town operation budget is up just a little bit, all things relative. Just under two percent, one point nine percent. The Berkshire Hills Regional School District line. Which is that second line, the assessment for the town of Great Barrington is twenty-two point two million, about five point six percent from last year. Um. The total to be raised, of course, equals the total amount of expenses that I went through on the, on the previous page, I'll just. Go a little faster here and we'll come back. These are the operating budgets over time, FY twenty-six. Just, uh, three hundred thousand or so above FY twenty-five, as I said, just under a two percent increase. Here are the major areas of the town's general fund. Um, these are, uh, these consist of the, the general government, which includes the town manager, the, um. Assessors Department, Finance, Tax Department, or Planning Department. General Government, expenditures are up just one point five percent. Public Safety, which includes fire, police, building inspector, animal control, et cetera, is down. Four point seven percent. Public Works up just a little bit overall, point nine three percent. Cultural Services, Recreation, Human Services, that includes things, including the library, for example. Um, veterans, et cetera, Senior Center, Council on Aging, up just two percent. Debt, retirement, and insurance. These are some of the major drivers of the town's budget, they have been for years and then continue to be. This year, um, debt is up six point five, retirement up five point two, and insurance up, uh, six percent from last year. Those, that absorbs some fairly major increases in insurance costs to the town. Overall, those bottom three items, debt, retirement, and insurance make up forty percent. Of the town's, uh, general fund operating budget. So you can see those three, those three areas really drive our budget. The general fund capital budget, it doesn't include the wastewater budget. Um, as, uh, agreed to by the, uh, by the boards. Uh, police, proposed, uh, all-weather drone and e-bike and two new cruisers this year. Fire Department, uh, has requested and the boards agree or recommend, uh, new radios for all of the personnel and apparatus. New vehicles. Uh, transit, this request covers the town's cost for two vehicles. Eighty-five percent of the total costs would come from a state grant. If we don't get the grant, we won't purchase the vehicles. Technology budget. Is, uh, these are funds to pay for new file servers, something that we absolutely must, must have. Three major areas of public works requests. Vehicles and equipment, just under a million dollars, buildings and grounds, just under a half a million dollars. Streets and bridges, bridges at eleven million dollars, that includes about six billion dollars in grants. Um, it does not include the Brookside Road Bridge, which you'll see on the special article page coming up. Parks, three hundred and thirty-two thousand worth of equipment and improvements across town parks. Just a reminder of the general fund capital. These are authorizations that we seek from town meeting, and we will also seek to exclude these funds from the town's, uh, proposition two and a half calculation. Um. We don't incur the cost, if we're borrowing these funds, not all of these are borrowed, if we don't incur the cost of less than until we borrow the funds. So you'll see future years debt service being dependent on how much of these projects we've been accomplishing and how much we need to. The special articles this year include vocational tuition and transportation for the town's, uh, obligation to, to get, uh. Vocational tech students up to decline, pay for their tuition and transportation during. They mentioned earlier, the ambulance, um, Southern Berkshire ambulance subsidy at three hundred and four thousand nine hundred and nine dollars and a running cents, fully funded. Rebuilding up our unemployment trust fund at twenty thousand dollars. The Affordable Housing Trust line here takes revenue from the, uh, short-term rentals, Special Community Impact Fee. Which is in a separate account and transfers it to the Affordable Housing Trust. That we didn't, uh, voted a year or two ago to do. Two special revenue uses for operating fund, the cemetery at thirty thousand dollars and Conservation Commission Wetlands Fund. At twenty thousand dollars, that'll also be appropriated into the, uh, operating budget. Some legal fees for rights of ways easements, um, this is in connection to drainage easements, trail easements. Uh, right-of-way acquisitions to, uh, ensure that the state can complete the construction of Division Street Bridge. And finally, whoops, sorry for the typo in Brookside Road there, uh, the Brookside Road Temporary Bridge. And or some temporary emergency facilities is, uh, was at three million dollars special. So some quick, uh, summary statistics for you, this budget as proposed, as presented. Here estimates a tax rate next year of fourteen point oh nine, that's assuming we, we. That's based on previous year, uh, assessed values. It gives us an excess levy capacity of a hundred and two thousand dollars. That's better than the eighteen thousand dollars we had in FY twenty-five, much better. But it still means we have very little taxing capacity. Uh, the general fund free cash balance will be just under three million, after we use free cash to offset the tax levy. There is a significant amount of money in the Cannabis Community Impact Funds that we count, just over five million, that will stay there. The Wastewater, uh, Enterprise Fund has a substantial, uh, uh, retained earnings balance, very healthy, that helps us. Uh, absorb capital costs and rate increases at five point two million dollars. And also, um, helps us absorb future large-scale capital projects. At the, at the sewer plant. The, uh, other post-employment benefits fund balance is just under a million dollars as of the end of the calendar year. Our stabilization funds there at the bottom, we have, uh, seven hundred and sixty thousand in the general stabilization funds. And capital fund, one point five million. We're not using those this year, we're not proposing to use those, so you won't see anything related to those on the town meeting warrant. We'll just stay there and continue to collect the interest funds. And I think. That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. And so the floor is now open for public comments to, uh. Organize the process, we ask that each speaker state their name and their address. And the speaker is requested to come to the microphone. And we ask that each speaker limit their comments to three minutes. So I think we'll do the, uh, the typical back and forth between in person and online. So. David, sorry?
Sure. Yeah, well, three, two, three, long, long road, a couple items. Well, I guess, first one is, my understanding is that all nonprofits typically are asked to take grants for extra money, correct? More or less. So my point is, the BFW is a nonprofit. But yet, it's a line item within that veterans thing. And looking at their nine ninety form. I get the sense that their income is basically whatever you all give them. And they don't do much else to get additional income, I find that problematic, really. You know, we just kind of told nonprofits, hey, if you need extra cash or extra money for a project or something for the town, well. Raise it somehow, yet. The BFW is basically dependent upon us to pay for their lease for their place. And there must be another way of doing it more effectively. So that's my first thing. Uh, second issue I wanted to bring up was about the ambulance service failing them out. I agree that we all know that that's a money-looting proposition. And I would appreciate if you all would at some point over the next six months to a year. Figure out how we can stabilize them without having to fund. Them by ourselves. And since, basically, not basically, BHS gets all the business. I would kind of hope that they would be a little bit more forthright in helping that ambulance company to make ends meet somehow. I mean, looking at the state list of all ambulance companies within the state itself. There aren't that many that are independent like ours. They're really disappearing, they're kind of dinosaurs, actually. So I kind of hope that somewhere, someone can find a means of establishing either joining what Stockbridge and Richmond are doing, or. Some other way of making things better. Um, and the last issue, I guess, is, uh, we have Aaron Congrillo in the room, named the school budget. Um. I made the bad decision to look at the Department of Education, Secondary Education website and play with numbers. And having lived in the Pioneer Valley for twenty-something years, our kids went to school there. We are spending a shitload of money. Or in English.
I wouldn't do that.
Okay, we're spending a ton of money for not such a great school department. And having lots of. Less than exemplary assessments by the state for our school district. And. There being very few. Participants in paying for this here compared to other school districts. I think we need to think outside the box somehow and readdress how we're going to go forward. Because the numbers go up. We pay more per student than anybody west of Worcester. So something's wrong there, to me, that's a red flag. And we have some schools in, in Western Mass that are great, some schools are mediocre and some are phenomenal. But when you look at, the state publishes every year how much you spend per pupil, total money. And our numbers are just going up sky high. And we can argue all day and all night as to whether it's worth it or whether the school district is good enough to warrant that kind of money, but there's something wrong here. And I think we should try to look at it differently in terms of. Why are we spending so much money per pupil? Are we bringing students from outside the district? And I do have the numbers, actually at home, not here. How many people we do, the state publishes the listing for every school district. How many from outside the district come? And it gives you some money, but it doesn't pay, obviously, for what it costs to educate a pupil. So I think my beef on it would say sometime in the future. We should reassess what we pay the school district, Berkshire Hills. And not just simply say, you know, we get the budget from them saying, okay, people pay up. Because I feel like that's what's happening here. Other school districts have issues, but they're a bit more open to discussion. And here you have. The school people make their budget, there's a little discussion, but not really with the payers that much. It's sent to the three towns, the three towns in turn pay whatever they're assigned. But we don't have a lot, we don't get enough information to say, is it really appropriate? Or should we be asking them to cut back on their benefits for their employees? Thinking about different programs, all of that, so I'll stop there because I'm rambling, thank you.
Thanks, um. I won't, I'm not going to respond, but I will say that, that there was a fair amount of collaboration this year between the joint committee and the school committee budget process. You know, whether or not that was enough, others can, everyone can decide for themselves, but there was a fair amount of collaboration. Thank you, uh, do we have anyone on board?
No, he has risen, right, so.
Susan Moore, one Ebbingham Drive, um. I use the Division Street Bridge very often at my end of town. And it, it struck me when I was reading this, this article in the newsletter about the, um, Brookside Bridge. I'm wondering, and you probably have thought about this, wouldn't it make more sense to put the three million dollars toward doing a finished bridge on Division Street? Then taking that wonderful temporary structure with all its lights and so forth, and putting that on Brook Street? And then, uh, I don't know if we accumulate, uh, these bridges, or whether they're leased or rented. But I just wondered what the thinking was for allocating the funds of that. Rather than finishing the Division Street Bridge and then using the temporary structure of Brook Street.
Uh, sure, I'll just clarify it briefly. Part of it has to do with the timing of when the state will begin the construction of the full replacement on Division Street. Uh, so when that temporary structure will be avail, available to us to use. And the, uh, which is, which will be a little bit of time. And the desire, hopefully, to begin a Brookside Road temporary replacement before that Division Street. Um, temporary structure becomes available. Now, um, we do move forward with Brookside Road, uh, the state is definitely moving forward with Division Street. That temporary bridge on Division Street would become a town asset that we could use elsewhere or sell. To potentially offset some of the costs on Brookside, so just. That's the brief synopsis of the thinking behind, uh, behind that, and why we can't just transfer it easily to the new one.
To Ben.
We, we had hoped that the timing would line up just right, but it's, but it's, uh, doesn't look that way.
Any other comments? Please.
Lydia Shapiro, about Seventy Fifth Montlean Road. The Brookside Road's bridge borrowing of three million is based on an eleven point six million dollar estimate. What would the borrowing be based on the most recent estimate of fifty million, five hundred and thirty-five thousand and some change being? Uh, the Division Street Temporary Bridge does not have the required length for reuse on the Brookside Bridge. I understand Governor Healy has an eight point six billion transportation plan in Chapter Ninety Bill. And she points out from the onset, her administration came in with a commitment to Berkshire County to do a better job as a state to take care of them. A bill for bridges, roads, and infrastructure. Uh, there's been discussions regarding next year. And years to come budget has been extremely challenging. We've mentioned a school budget increase, capital needs continuing, and funding of staff. Who are essential in emergency services, staff that are essential in emergency services. Town employee health insurance will now half a million dollars. But the town plans on hiring ten new employees. How is this even considered, a consideration? And what is the need for the role of these new ten employees? School budget is currently seventy percent of our taxes. Vivian Orlovsky, I hope I pronounced her name right. Spoke on the New Monmouth Regional High School's effect on the older, overall budget being overlooked. She serves on the Sustainability Committee and managed to obtain a grant from the Useton Heritage. To bring a naturally renamed speaker, talk about a climate resilient planning. A climate resilient campus, how is this going to affect the overall budget? Are we getting a new climate resembling state-of-the-art school built into the bank? Uh, Seekonk Crossroad is in design now, is, and is proposed to be rehabilitated in fiscal year two thousand and six, funded by borrowing. State does rehabilitation, town does design. There's a difference between rehabilitation and design. Design is a pro, process of creating roads that consider drivers' expectations, abilities, and limitations. To optimize safety and efficiency. Road design refers to the initial planning and engineering process of creating a new road. While road rehabilitation refers to return, restoring an existing road that has deteriorated over time. The Seekonk Crossroad being shortened off of Egmont Plain Road. Back to the other side of the runway and then connected to Rover Road to access Egmont Plain Road. Enabling runway expansion with Berkshire Regional Planning Commission for the town hosted. Allows the Great Barrington Regional Airport also to be on the other side of the runway. And I have two concerns, I'm concerned with the record preservation of records in the town hall basement. Specifically, records pertaining to me involving immediate neighbors, airport, town officials, former town officials, Superior Court, et cetera. With, I think, an emphasis on two thousand and ten through two thousand and fifteen, but all are important. This task is being performed, performed by town clerk Josh Ryan, who happens to be an attorney. The former town clerk Marie Ryan, who happens to be all too familiar with my paper trail. I am concerned is being intentionally, uh, eradicated. This is compounded by the new record request fee of twenty-five dollars an hour put in place by former town manager Mark Brohinsky. And I'm concerned with Chrissy volunteering to write the zoning board of appeal minutes for many reasons, including the aforementioned. And the airport enforcement action filed in land court, also a guise requesting zoning board appeal. For airport expansion, extension and enlargement. Requested in the prayer. For relief by plaintiffs Holly Hamer, Anne Fredericks and her husband, husband attorney Mark Fasta. Thank you.
Want to show that they are seventy Division Street. I just want to get a clear understanding. First off, thank you for the work that was done on the budget. Um, it was lengthy. But it's what has to be done when you're working with other people's money. Was the right thing to do, but from what I understand right now. What has been avoided is the need to bring to vote a proposition to an half override. Am I correct on that? And if that is correct, that's, that's great. That's wonderful. Excellent job. Uh, however, i- it's still too much. The, 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 the cost to live here is just going through the roof. Um. My husband and I together, we're still working. I just turned sixty-seven. My husband's a bit younger than I am. I'm a public employee, a non-union public employee. My husband works for a nonprofit. Uh, together, we make less than some town employees make. And both mine, I have a master's degree, my husband has a bachelor's degree, so, um. No, e- education does come into play with that. That being said, um. We feel we are being pushed into a decision we don't want to make. And it's one that the town doesn't want to see either overall. And that's the use of a property as a short-term rental. I own a nice property on Division Street. Don't get me going on the Division Street Bridge, we're not going to go there, but. My husband works in Westfield, he travels two hours every day. One hour out, one hour back. And. He's even contemplated. When I retire, of course, this is before the federal government kind of blew up and everything else did. That we relocate to Westfield, but keep our home, which is my family's homestead and use it as a short-term rental. Which right now will be the only way my husband and I can retire comfortably. So our budget is actually particularly the school budget is pushing us into a direction. None of the people around the table want to see. People. Giving up their homes and using them as short-term rentals. It's going to be a business to us. We don't want to do that. It's my family's homestead. I don't want to see it as a business, but I don't want to sell it. And I was a landlord once and I don't want to do a long-term. Uh, rental on it. That, that being, uh, one twenty, but. We gotta do better on these budgets because my husband and I were not alone. We're not, I know people, there are people far worse off in Great Barrington that are just hanging on. And I don't know how to do it, but we have to get things in check. Is it necessary to have two cruisers and these trucks and everything like that? I'm doing my home budget, my husband and I literally sit down, he's a finance director. And we go, we have centrally a long-term plan like the town of Great Barrington. How long will this car last? How long will this last, et cetera, et cetera? Well, one of our vehicles has two hundred and seven thousand miles on it. We really should be replacing, replacing it. Because of everything that's going on, not just at the town level, but at the federal level as well, we're saying we're going to have to. Stretch that vehicle one more year. So I just. I think the people around these tables. You can feel the pain. I, I don't think you're ignoring it, that's not what I'm saying. But I don't think people could take much more of it. I just wanted that, say that a proposition two and a half, I would fight tooth and tooth and nail, override tooth and nail. But the position I'm in right now, I can't speak for my husband, is a new school. I'm not voting for a new school. Sorry, that's not going to happen. There are some other things I'm not going to vote for either. I live in a community where we don't even have clean water. Eventually, we're going to have a TCB staging area. And worse. And I'm paying top dollar to live there. So I'm at a limit as a taxpayer and I'm sure there are other taxpayers in Housatonic who are at a limit as well. Thank you for your time. Thank you. And Chris, if I could have a copy of the PowerPoint at some point this week, that'd be great. Thank you so much.
Any well, comment? Anna Christine, please state your name and your address.
Hi, it's, uh, Toby Stanton, sixty-nine Division Street. Um, I, I just have a. I don't know, I, I think you guys are, are put a, a task in front of you that's incredibly difficult. And I appreciate the effort that goes into it. And. I am with Michelle on this too, I'm. I am at the end, the burden is, is too much. Um, so. Uh, I, I'm really gonna have to go after the school part of this, and I know that's not part of this meeting, so. I'm gonna leave it there except for the fact I need to comment on the. Person who, who spoke about the VFW. And I'm not a veteran. But I do rent the space on a almost monthly basis, not me directly, but a group. And I would love to see some busking go down there and off of Railroad Street where. The, uh, the restaurant owners have. Uh, asked not for it to be there because it takes business away from them. And. I think that we should honor those people who. Go there, who, who fight for our country, for our freedoms. Some of them are missing a leg or an arm. Some of them look fine, but they are. Torn up inside from the stuff that they have seen. So to take any money away from the VFW is unconscionable. Thank you very much.
Thank you. James, are you there? Can you?
Things moved around, okay.
James, or take your name and your address, please.
James Garzon eighty-four Northlane Road. I just want to, I guess, repeat what Michelle said, I want to say thank you. Pretty much everything I, I was gonna say aligns with Michelle, the school. I don't know how we going to agree to a hundred million dollars. That we're gonna fun and another fifty from the state, it just. We are all at the end, you know, I just got my quarterly. Or yearly water bill, you know, it's outrageous. We don't have clean water for Housatonic since twenty eighteen, we've been. Fighting to get them clean water, it's still not here, you know. We have so many people and we all walk around town who are scraping by, we have people who are in dire need. People who don't have housing, people who can't afford the high rents. I, I know we're all trying, but we have to do something different, I just. I'm exasperated like everyone else in that room. We are failing to find a solution. And spending more money is. Not what we need to do, uh. I, I just don't know what else, I mean, I've been trying to figure out what are we doing with. Bringing in new builders, what happened with, with the Sears school that just staying there with. The owners not doing what they promised, I mean. I can go on and on and I just thank you to Michelle and everybody speaking up, we all are at our end and. We're, we're at a loss, so we're just not doing what's right, school and everything else, I'm sorry, but. We can't vote on these things, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we don't have anyone else online?
Hi, I'm Mel Deskin-Kailas, one oh three Rushford Road. And first I wanted to thank the Finance Committee. And the Select Board for being so helpful to us in this process. Many of us who live on the road have never been. Involved in the budget, have never been involved in a town meeting, and I just want to thank all of you. For being so helpful and helping us lead to the process and get us here. And a particular urgency, the reason why it's so urgent to get the. Uh, money approved this year is in two years' time. Uh, the Kellogg Street Bridge in Sheffield, it will be closing. And that will mean that we're returning to a thirty-minute ambulance time for everybody who lives up on the road. And so the time, of course, to do something about it. Is and be proactive about it is now, so I thank you for that. And also we have to keep in mind that the three million dollars is just a, is a placeholder, it might actually be less. We know right from the get-go. It can be offset by a five hundred thousand dollar grant that's coming in, that Smitty proposed, that's waiting for a vote in the state senate. And also from, um, as Chris mentioned before, the sale of the Acro Bridge. So, uh, that could. Theoretically reduce that three million right off. The bat by about one point three million dollars. So I wanted to thank you and I. Is, I guess this is not the form to ask about the procedure, if we make it to the warrant, what happens, what kind, what's the vote, uh, you know, again. I haven't been through this process, so. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Meredith Smith, fifty-three Brookside Road. I know that the Brookside Road number. Is a large number for that bridge, and I just want to point out and go off what you said, Merle, that. We are looking at at least five more years before this project goes to bid with the state and. In that time when Kellogg is under construction, that increased time. Is scary for me as a mom who just in January, um, had to call nine-one-one for my fourteen-month-old son who was having a seizure. And it was impacting his breathing and to be on the phone with dispatch knowing we did not have enough time to wait for the ambulance. And making the decision, do we drive to Kellogg, do, can I get over the bridge and. The, I will say, I was very impressed with dispatch and nine-one-one and the local GV police met me and. Sorry, I'm emotional, um, and the ambulance met me on the other side of the bridge. And, but I don't want any other parents, or what if you're not in a case, like. I have a small child I can run and carry, but that's not for everyone, and that's not going to be in everyone's best interest or even capability. And two weeks later, we had that crazy snow and ice. And there was no way we could have gotten over that bridge safely. Luckily for me, the timing worked and we were able to get the care we needed and we were able to get to the hospital and everyone was okay. But I'm nervous about what is the interim in the next five years plus the construction time? Of who can get hurt if we don't move forward on this temporary bridge. I'm really thinking about the safety. It's not about an inconvenience, it's really about the safety of the people who live on this side of town, so thank you.
Anyone else in the room? And anyone else online? Okay, um. I can see that all those present in Division Street had an opportunity to comment. And then all those online that commented had that opportunity as well. And we'll now, I'll now look for a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
All, uh, all call votes, all those in favor? The hearing is now closed. So we'll now move on to, uh, the next stage of the phase of our meeting, the Select Board and the Finance Committee will now vote separately. On the fiscal two thousand twenty-six budget. And we'll, uh, discussion will take place.
Let's just look, I, I think we've done. Due diligence this year, we've got some good comments here, some pretty understandable comments. We agonize over this budget and I think we pretty much talked it out, but let's just go over the three major. Sections, the departments, capital, and articles, and see if anyone has anything in any of those three that they want to bring up. And, um, we'll start with that, so table six, the departments. Anything in the departments that you want to bring up?
Yeah, we'll have a chance to speak and it's open to you, but.
So go ahead.
We're gonna go ahead.
Yep.
Okay. Well. Um, I wrote this down, so I didn't want to miss anything and. I wanted to speak to the issue of the match at the, um, Mansfield Lake again. I spoke to the chair about speaking on the match and he said, I probably wouldn't change anyone's mind, but maybe I won't. Last night when I was making a fire from my wood stove, I had some very strong feelings, so I'm addressing them now. As you all know, we are having a very tight budget season, we may not be able to find. Uh, important items, but some teachers are losing jobs. Maybe I'm too much with socials, maybe I'm thinking with my emotions and maybe not my wallet. Some people have spoken out about the mats and how they. Want them, but I have yet to hear myself included, anyone speak about the loss of teaching jobs and maybe some support staff. Uh, I know that, that any of the teachers staff. I don't know any of the teacher staff, but I would like to put a name on them for this purpose. Would be terrible to lose Mr. Jones, Mrs. Smith. Or that wonderful cust- custodian, the teachers taught our kids well, Mr. Brown was always very nice to the kids. If these folks live in our town, they will have to find jobs elsewhere in the county, they may have to move. Not to mention a loss of an income. I'm very disappointed that some would really think that the map are important. The people who have lost their jobs, these are real folks, not an inanimate object like so, like said mats. That have to be changed more than once and we have to pay someone else to do it and it teaches us nothing. I want to say this out loud, we are losing jobs, but by golly, we're keeping those mats. I think, uh, if you were having that conversation with somebody, they might scratch their head. Uh, I know elimination of the mats won't cover a teacher's salary, but we could use that money where. Uh, somewhere else or put it back in the free cash. I know if it were me and I knew that the town. Had more money to fund mats, to me it sounds disrespectful. I want to show my support. And respect for these people losing an income in an expensive town living, I will vote no all day and long. In days, in today's time, I think it will be noted that. A lack of funding for the map, um, people would understand. And I wonder how many people outside of this room, even though we have a map. Thank you.
Anyone want to have any discussion on that or any of the other departments you want to talk about?
Nice, ask for clarification, how much, or can you remind me how much the maps are?
Five thousand two hundred and fifty.
Yeah, and that has to be changed. Couple times, so that. Throw out.
Yeah, I think we. If I have that right, we have the mats, it's a question of the. Uh, I'm looking at Jones. I'm wrong, but it's the labor involved with basically installing the mats and maintaining them.
If we pull them out, they clean them off, they put them back twice a year.
Could you give an overview of that again at the, at the microphone?
So, um. The mats the town holds before my time and. The weeds tend to grow underneath them and then they decompose and the mats start floating, so it's meant to keep the mat, the weeds down. So when that, in the spring before the swim season starts, we have the contractor come and pull them out. Clean the mats and they re- replace it. And then some point during the summer, depending on the weed growth, we have to do it again.
Can I have a question on that? I mean, I do swim there and I know it's not very effective, um, frankly, the. It just doesn't, I mean, it's very difficult to do that because of the climate change and all that, but it's, it's, the mats are not really working that well. And I was wondering, is there something else that we could look into that would be a more. You know, um, efficient and more long-term solution?
The, just for clarification, the weed mats are only within the roped-off swim area at the beach, they're not across the entire lake. They are extremely effective in the roped-off swimming.
Over there, but not, not if you are swimming.
They don't go beyond that, they're only meant to the swimming area. So, so let, let me just explain something, the. Lake itself is under the purview of the Conservation Commission. So whatever, there's nothing we're gonna decide here tonight, other than the mats. About weeds, because that's under the purview of the Conservation Commission.
That's right, that's right.
They're only in the swim area.
The mats are only in the swim area.
May I just say that I am well aware where they are located? And just in my keeping, my feeling, I'm the subject. I, again, still don't feel. We're spending five thousand dollars on that mat, where that money could go to something else. It would go in back to our past one, and I'm, again, I'm willing to bet. No one outside this room even knows they have mats at the place.
Oh, I will say, I know that there are mats, however.
You're not outside the room.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm inside your room, you're a sir.
Yes, you are.
So I, I, once again, respectfully disagree, but I would like to know if anybody had a comment. Janice, maybe, or about safety in the mats, because I think that's, that could be. That could be a reason.
Hi, hi, everyone, I'm Janice Lucy from Berkshire South. I also live in Great Barrington, four fifteen Monterey Road. So the mats are only in the area, as, as been discussed. If the mats are not there, the area is unswimmable. So the money that we're spending on the lifeguards becomes, like, it doesn't make sense. Because people won't want to go in the water, because there will be weeds everywhere, okay? Weeds also create a safety hazard. It becomes much more difficult to see children or people that might have gone below the surface. So having the weed mats are really important for that reason as well. It really does make the area unswimmable if the weed mats are not there. I recognize that they're expensive, but they're very important if you're going to want to cultivate a healthy recreational area.
Yeah, I, I guess I would just say, I understand where, where Garfield's coming from for a certain aspect. But just the timing of it and the amount of money that was just invested in that area. I think, you know, there's been a lot of decisions already to upgrade that area. And to step back the, the one part which makes it very accessible for kids and everybody to go swimming there. For this year's budget cycle, I think we need to keep the mats in.
I also appreciate your sentiment, and I know throughout this budget process, we've made cuts and thinking about jobs. But I think, given how much we already are spending on youth programming, to cut the five thousand dollars that would. Make this a really great experience for families, and I know I've taken. My nieces and nephews who have visited to Mansfield, and it's been a great experience. I, I think it's a really wonderful opportunity that we provide to families and communities. So, which I don't agree with you on the mats.
That's fine, and, and again, as I stated, I'm, I'm concerned about people losing their job, their money having to move. And I'm, myself, I'm having it hard to justify not having some teachers, even though it wouldn't cover their salary. We can, as I said, can do something else with that money or put it back. And again, I'm not, maybe you're right, Denise, I don't, I absolutely haven't swum there in many, many moons.
Yeah.
But I, I.
Ben and Alana.
Okay, yeah, I just kind of want to jump into, and Ali, tell me if I'm doing math right. But I believe this, this number would account for point zero 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 one percent of the total budget. But kind of to Janice's point, this incredibly small investment makes the lake swimmable. It makes it a resource for the town, and it makes it something enjoyable. And I know what you're saying about cost of living, and I, I, I respectfully don't think that's a fair argument to make. Because this, as you have said, wouldn't really make the difference, and especially on a school budget that we don't control. But it does allow us to provide public resource to families, to have something to do in the summertime, to have a place to bring your kids. To keep it safe for them to actually enjoy one of the great natural resources we have in our town. It's, and I think the ROI on this incredibly small line item is immense.
Well, I'll see what's on the chair of the.
Hi, good evening, thank you so much. Yes, I just wanted to reiterate what, what Ben just mentioned about young families and limited resources. That are, that is being experienced by so many families in this community. Like Mansfield offers the opportunity for families to sort of relatively safely. Enjoy their time together out in our community. And, and this particular piece being what makes it possible for, for those families to. Enjoy the water. I, I understand the motivation to try and figure out ways of reducing the cost. And so, you know, in general, in future budget cycles, you know, we are wanting to figure out other ways of. Making Lake Mansfield more easily enjoyable for, for more people. But in the meantime, and for this year, the Parks Commission feels strongly that the. These, these mats are what makes it a viable resource to the community.
Anyone else? Other things on table, table, tablet, tab six, the part.
I have a question, I'm sorry, maybe you guys discuss it on the list, but there was, there is a difference between. Chris is proposing, and what do you have for the transfer station? And I was just wondering, what is the.
The budget line?
I'm looking at the difference in the recommendation of finance committee and the recommendation of family manager. What is the difference between those two?
In brief, I propose that the boards cut the transfer station from public use, using it only for families. Or households. Manual monitoring.
Anyone else? So then we have tab seven. Well, we want people to look at view of the specific motion you want us to do to accept this. If you don't, that's fine. I want to request, no, okay.
He specified in the.
The point of clarification. On the capital budget line, we have the streets, bridges and culverts, we have ten million two hundred fifty-five thousand. And then we have, and that amount is funded by three point two million in borrowings, and then just under seven million. Chapter ninety state grants and other grants. And just to clarify that. I knew this had come up before, but if, if, if those grants are not received, are we going ahead and forward?
All of those grants are actually in hand. The major grant is for North Plain Road, which would likely happen. Could happen this fiscal year. So if it comes in faster. Chapter ninety and the fair share increases are being dedicated already by Masthead Chief. And the major grant is in here, I think, is on, which is for. The east, sorry, West Sheffield Road retaining wall is already in hand. Those grants didn't come in for, like, West Sheffield Road, we will have to do the project.
And the warrant article's worded that, right?
Yes, it will look for a specific authorization for the borrowing. Is that what you mean?
Yeah, so in other words, we won't be authorizing the bor, the total borrowing, we'll only authorize the part that we're responsible for, not the.
The three point two million for bridges, the seven fifty for engineering, a total of four million. Twenty-five thousand for street.
Exactly, so we couldn't borrow that anyways, because we're not authorizing the borrowing of the grants.
But to directly answer Phil, those grants are, are really secure, very secure.
The chapter ninety grant is, that has not been received yet.
It's been dedicated already, yes, we did receive that note from the O T.
So it's been awarded, that's what he's asking. The reimbursement request, we go in and then we get refunded.
Yeah, we are assured we will have that.
Okay. Okay, well, I hope you receive it.
And we have tab nine, which is the special articles.
Is there any update on the various scenarios for the Brookside Bridge? There hasn't been much time.
Yeah, so we have, we have made significant progress in a couple of weeks here. We have come up with an option of inserting a temporary bridge through the existing bridge that will work. And it doesn't apply the loadings on the existing opponents, that was the concern at Holon. So we've kind of gone over that hurdle, we passed it on the Mass Highway. We've heard no objections, and we, nor do we see any reasons why they would object. It would still have to give, go through a chapter eight by review, which Mass Highway does. So over the next week or so, we're going to fine tune that number a little bit. So your placeholder now can be, you know, more of an actual number. We hope to know a, a more actual number by, by then. Oh, absolutely, by then, but I should have something here in a week or so.
Well, that's good news, because that was, I think we didn't, we weren't, well, we really didn't know how they would respond to that.
Basically, where we were planning to put the opponents for the temporary bridge, it was so close to the existing bridge, it was causing some loadings that were. Greater than it was designed for, or greater than were reflected in the design. So what we had to do is we had to extend the bridge ten feet on either side, the temporary bridge. To reduce that load effect and it worked, and Temporary Bridge Company is on board and it works for them too, so. It's not a, it's not a slam dunk, a lot of the things are assigned off, but everyone's very comfortable where we are.
Okay, and just to clarify, would this, this, this require a, a separately ordered, separately spectated temporary bridge?
Yes, yep. We will have the option to buy it or rent it. The break-even point is about three and a half years, which we will be right around, so we'll have to make that decision. But then, then probably will be best to buy it.
And, and if you can't answer this, then don't answer it, but, but you have a. Guest limit on, on the order time it would take to get that, that temporary bridge.
I do, they verified as of the discussions that it isn't, the parts are in stock throughout the country. And the shipping is included to get it here, in the proposal from the bridge company. So the sooner we can make a commitment, the sooner we can lock it in. Obviously, if these floods that we're seeing around, around the country take all the parts, we're out of luck, so there is an unknown.
And again, not, if you don't know, then you don't know right now. So you're, you're suggesting that this proposal, if it works, would likely have a cost that'd fall under that. At or under that three million dollar range.
Yeah. Great.
Anything else under special articles? Okay, so I think, anything else in the budget that, don't, some under any of those three categories? Anything else in the budget? Anything else in the budget you want to talk about before we begin the final vote? Okay, so, let's start with the finance committee final vote to accept.
With the operating method?
Start with the operating.
Do you want? Typically, we do both together, or we want, because we don't have the numbers necessarily.
You mean we don't have the numbers?
Well, I don't have a motion that says we want to accept this for operating this for capital.
Oh, I mean, you can work with.
I'm just going to read off.
Okay, and then, but you have to include special articles, there's also free cash, I think it, it's more of a, a larger motion than that.
So I can't just make a motion to fund the. Total general fund budget.
That works, that doesn't include capital, that doesn't include the school district, that doesn't. Well, but there's little pieces, so. But it's more than four. There's different three counts where cash is coming from, I just want to make sure that we've covered everything, so I did start with that motion.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion. That we approve the total general fund, that we recommend, excuse me, we recommend the total general budget. Fund budget for fiscal year twenty-six of sixty million six hundred ninety-two thousand seven hundred twenty-four.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Same motion?
You have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous.
I'll make a motion that we fund the total general, excuse me, the, the fiscal year twenty-six capital budget. Thirteen million.
Second.
That doesn't include wastewater, should I? Okay, that's fine.
Motion is seconded.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Same motion?
You have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
I made a motion that we fund the wastewater total enterprise fund budget. Fiscal year twenty-six of three million two hundred twenty-two thousand nine hundred sixty-one.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Same motion?
You have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous?
I made a motion that we fund the wastewater capital budget for fiscal year twenty-six of one million one hundred fifty thousand.
Second. Any further comment? All in favor?
Same motion?
You have a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? Yeah, special articles, as recommended.
Motion that we fund the special article, the special article, excuse me, we recommend to fund the special article for fiscal year twenty-six. Of three million six hundred eight thousand six hundred fifty-six dollars and twenty-five cents.
Second. Any further comment? None, all in favor?
Same motion?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous?
I made the motion that we recommend to fund the school full assessment budget of twenty-two million two hundred nine thousand one hundred forty-eight.
Second. Further comment, all in favor?
Same motion?
Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous.
All of the motions, I'm looking at all, on my.
The only question I have, and I don't know the answers, but we have to vote to use free cash. Or is that?
Can you read that between your?
Because I didn't want to be other moment.
So we need to.
So the free cash.
Three million nine hundred one seven hundred three. So I made, yeah, I made a motion to. I make a motion to recommend that we use free cash to reduce the tax level for fiscal year twenty-six proposed budget. Three million nine hundred thirty-one seven hundred twenty-four.
Second.
Any further comment? All in favor?
Same motion?
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous.
We'll just, I mean, we have a standing meeting every Tuesday, right? I think you, I think you've covered every.
Position.
Pretty sweet time. Wait, you guys stand behind me, don't.
Michelle Bear seventy division street. Uh, again, I want to thank you. For everything you've done. I just want to remind people out there that to never hold you to one vote. That it's critical that people attend. The annual town meeting vote. Um, it's easy to be on Zoom and criticize people sitting around at the table. I know firsthand, it wasn't that long ago. I served on the finance committee. And people would get in my face and everything, and I would go, you know, I'm only one vote.
That's right.
You go to annual town meeting. You know, um, it doesn't matter. You know, you've recommended the budget. And now you're presenting it at annual town meeting. So I strongly encourage people. To go to not only the annual town meeting, but the special town meeting as well regarding uh, our water situation. Uh, because in a very short period of time, people will be complaining about dirty water. So uh, that leads me to my next statement. A couple of times our veterans have come up at the funding of our uh, BFW, et cetera, not only this meeting, but at other meetings. Uh, I attend a lot of meetings in this room, and I'm always looking at the photos up on the wall. Of the people who have served and are no longer with us. I'm a daughter of a World War Two veteran. My father's gone now. I'm a sister of a world of a Vietnam uh, era veteran who is also gone now. So I just want to remind people in this room and on Zoom and in the community, the reason why we have this process are because of the people like them. We wouldn't be here. And as far as I'm concerned, anybody who's willing to take a bullet for me. I'm going to support them. Uh, that being said, brings me back to what. They have done. So we can go and vote. Freely. There there are countries where. You risk your life to go to the polls or stand up. And say something. Um. I have a sister-in-law who comes from another country. Her parents were visiting. And they didn't, they don't speak English, so, but. My brother was telling them what happens in town government, because. You know, even though he lives somewhere else now, he remembers how it is in Great Barrington. And my sister-in-law's family said. You can do that. You can do that and not get thrown into jail for it or anything like that. Yes, we get a few dirty looks, but we don't get thrown in jail for it. So I really appreciate the opportunity to stand before. Our elected officials and speak. I just wish more people would do it. But I really hope people turn out for the special town meeting, and after all this hard work, the annual town meeting as well. Thank you.
Do you want to, online or here? Um.
Behind you, Steve.
Just talk.
Mariah Shapiro, seventeenth Evermont Lane Road, for the record. Florida Health recently applied for a grant that covers a permanent household hazardous waste center. My property is compliance, is in compliance for this center and in compliance with Massachusetts general. Law, public health and air safety, and also Massachusetts general law, public health. There are only two collection centers in Western Mass. These centers accept waste products from residents of any municipality in Massachusetts and some adjoining states. My property is in compliance with Massachusetts general laws and Commonwealth mass regulations, including but not limited to. Surface and groundwater discharge permit regulations, industrial wastewater pretreatment regulations, air quality regulations. Toxic use reduction regulations, hazardous waste management regulations, Division of Water Pollution Control. Surface water discharge permit program, and sewer systems extensions and connections program. Air quality standards for C M R regulatory authority. These provisions were added in the two thousand and ten to the codified zoning bylaw, water quality production overlay district, section nine point two. The town cannot deny developer establishing a waste combustion facility on industrial property. And I'm asking, does anyone in this room or online, or does anyone in this room or anyone online know somebody with his property with similar situation as mine? Uh, the household, the household hazardous collection center is going on the other side of the runway and the six proposed hangars on the Walter. Los to Great Barrington Regional Airport. Permitted in two thousand twenty-three and made legal based on an approximate locus, simply put, because the airport cannot be legal within the airport current confines. The hazardous waste combustion facility and de-watering plant are going on industrial properties abutting the Houstonic River with railroad tracks. And the proposed rail siding and rail spurs, one in Houstonic and one in Great Barrington, on industrial. One hundred and forty-five acres G E K Great Barrington as part of the twenty twenty Rest of the River Settlement Agreement in North Lane Road. Hazardous waste combustion facilities for in hazardous, metaphor and acute waste. Municipal solid waste and P C Bs from Houstonic Rest of the River cleanup. Consideration is preferred method of P C P disposal. The aforementioned generates direct monetary compensation grants and incentives, and is part of, is part of the comprehensive plan for Great Barrington. So I question the current and future financial dire straits. Being projected. I'm also concerned Sharon Gregory's special town meeting regarding Houstonic Water Works of Great Barrington Fire District. Is the guise for the guise for the airport to be on the meeting floor in conjunction with the plaintiff's land court. Airport endorsement also a guise and their prayer for release. Relief requesting further municipal approval for airport expansion, extension and enlargement, and I own the end of the runway. None of you are smarter than me. You sure have ganged up on me, causing extreme trauma. And fear and very well-founded fear of the numerous parties involved. Really honestly, him, Paul, me and my property. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Please, one Emmy tell drive. I'm just wondering if there will be a printed copy of the warrant. Before town meeting, and where can one pick one up? I don't have a printer at home at all. Will there be copies available?
Town usually provides copies with the town clerk and at the libraries, and then. Um, as you come into town meeting. You are checked in and given.
But there'll be available like a week before, so we can um.
Yes.
There was nothing here tonight that I could see, so I just wondered.
Uh, tonight is. It's sorry, so there's not a lot.
Oh, gosh, yeah.
Any, anyone else? Any media? Just want to thank the finance committee and slot board. This is a tough year. We work well together. Doesn't mean we always agree, but we've worked well together, and. Everyone here has done their homework, and I really appreciate that, and um, look forward to seeing you at. Our meeting.
I have one thing to say. I just wanted to. Maybe make a slight correction to Michelle. It's true that all these folks, my dad's a World War Two veteran, my brother served. And one of them served in Vietnam, it was in the service. Um, but voting. In this country. Is not the same for all. So in this country, some people have the same problem as people in the other countries, and I'm talking. Um, you're being a person of color, and I don't mean just uh, being black. And there, as you know, there's things going on to try to prevent people from making their votes in our own United States. So I just wanted to clarify that.
And thank you. Unanimous consent, Eric Jordan. Thank you, everyone.